Well, it's nice you can see I.
Okay.
Good morning. July 23rd, 2019, and I give my call to all of the county's story county board supervisors.
July 23rd.
Did I say August?
Yes, you did.
It is not August, it is July 23rd. I really don't want summer, so I answered. So, it is July 23rd, and please feel free to join us as we say the questions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, the next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda itself, and I'm making proposals that we use item 14 to review the contract with U.S. Marshals office to be after item 6 on the agenda. Will somebody make a motion to approve the agenda of that?
I'd so make that motion.
Aye, second thought.
Okay, discussion.
No? Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved with a change. Next is public comment number one, and this is the comment period for the public to address any topics on today's agenda, if you're not already presenting for those topics. If so, if anybody would like to make a public comment, please come to my phone now. See, nobody knows who my phone is, but it's in the comments section. And we go into agents' reports, and we have Leon Vaughn from Mainstream Living here.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bill Vaughn from Mainstream Living. Mainstream Living provides residential employment services for people with disabilities in Story, Dallas, Polk, and Boone counties. We serve about 500 individuals on any given day. I have about 600 employees. For our kind of a provider, we're fairly large. Our annual budget's between $19 million to $20 million a year. Biggest challenge we always face is getting employees, and that's a real challenge in our industry. I sent a report to you, the county, and I'd like to thank you for this. We're very grateful. The county through the community, the county supports some of our individuals that are not yet on Medicaid. Virtually 99.9% of the people we serve are on Medicaid, but some people might move into the county or move into the region that don't have those resources, and for a period of time, the county or the region will step up and help provide services for them while they're getting on the waiting lists or getting approved for their services. We provide home and community-based services to 23 individuals in Story County, daily services for 46 individuals at 13 different sites. We provide medically fragile services for some of the highest need individuals that have intellectual disabilities. We have three houses that specialize in that, where we have nursing supports available. One of those houses is in Ames. We serve people at the center, which is a day habilitation site in Ames. Where roughly about 83 people come there every day. We have two enclaves, one at Hot Chemical and one at Sour, Danfoss, where we serve 42 individuals and work enclaves at those sites. For this most recent year, we requested $2,000. The county, through Central Iowa Community Services, has approved $2,000 of support for the enclaves, habilitation. We were on track to receive roughly $19,977, which is what we requested, again, from Central Iowa Community Services and the county. Story County currently pays for two individuals receiving quarter-hour SCL services, so these are some of the people, again, that kind of fall between the cracks. Our request was for $2,780, and that's what was allocated. And we pay for individuals for the quarter-hour day habilitation services, and our request was for $70, and the allocation's for $70. So, we're not a big drawer of county money, but we certainly appreciate that for the people that come that need those services. I'm going to try and keep it brief, but entertain any questions you guys might have, or...
Bill, I have a couple of questions. Do you know what your, do you have folks that are on a waiting list for your SCL services or your day hab services for your agency?
We have waiting lists for every single service we have. We have people for the medically fragile services, we could serve probably 70 more people.
How many more did you say?
Seventy.
That's what I thought you said.
We work a lot with some of the individuals that go to Child Serv, that are some of the highest need people. So, when they leave Child Serv, oftentimes they'll be referred to us, but they require an environment that, you know, is very supportive. We're serving right now a person who's blind, she's deaf, and she's not able to regulate her body temperature. So, every 15 minutes, we have to heat her up or cool her down, and she's in a wheelchair. So, she's Helen Keller without the ambulation, and she has an intellectual disability. We have another individual with us whose bones are the consistency of fingernails, and if we move him the wrong way, we could break every bone in his body. So, we care for him and one of our locations as well. And we also serve a number of people that you would never know that they have a disability, you know, that are very high functioning, that might be in the community. Almost everybody here's worked someplace in Ames or, you know, gone someplace in Ames, and a lot of those people are members that are out in the community that you see working in the locations throughout town.
About how long is your waiting list for, like, day hab or SCL services?
SCL or day hab?
I guess, I mean, not necessarily the number. I mean, if somebody wanted to get into SCL or day hab services, are you looking, okay, you'd get someone on in a month or two months? Are you looking at your eight months, a year, or longer?
It's probably a month to two months, but it really is very staff-dependent.
Sure.
We could be twice the size we are if we had the capacity to staff for that. So, you know, quite honestly, we try to find roommates that are compatible, that want to live together, so our roommates are often determined about who's going to be moving into a location, if it's not a medical need kind of situation, and/or it's a staffing issues to try and open a location that we're able to staff that.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. I'm going to leave my card for Lynda and Loris, if that's okay, and Lisa, you can come too. You've seen many of our houses.
I have one question.
Sure.
I hadn't, the enclave, that term, I hadn't seen it before. You said that was a cop camo on Sour, Danfoss. Is that supporting employment opportunities there?
Absolutely. What we do is, we have a limited liability corporation that's a part of Mainstream called WorkStream. And through that corporation, we have contracts with manufacturers. We've had some in Des Moines at different times as well. And they'll contract directly with us. Members that come to Mainstream Living may work on that enclave. And what an enclave is, is a location, you know, under their roof, under their management. If you go into Danfoss, you'll, yeah, right in the middle of the major manufacturing section is a section where about 20 people come and they work there every day. They work for one of my staff people under that contract, under that roof, and they receive a check from Danfoss that goes to WorkStream, where they're employer of record. So, they're not technically employees of Danfoss, they're employees under this contract.
That was the only question I had, but I just wanted to ask that. Thank you. Thanks for answering. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Can I leave my card for you guys? I only have one in mind.
It's okay. Actually, I think actually you're in my role, or my phone already, so I'll pass it on over to Lynda then, okay?
Thank you.
One last thing, if I can. Sorry. We did do some remodeling of two of our houses and added some handicap accessible stuff, so if you want to come for a tour, give me a call, I'd love to show you.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by the urban renewal area applicants, and Leon Harder is going to walk us through some information here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have, we're still waiting on one applicant to be here. Maybe the detour is causing some delay, too. But we do have the following communities represented, and then we'll go in alphabetical order. These are entities that submitted for the urban renewal area project applications, is Cambridge, Huxley, Maxwell, Nevada, Roland, Story City, Ziering, and Collins. We'll start with Cambridge, and then again, work through alphabetical order. Ziering has not yet arrived, and we have a representative from Roland that was not expecting to present today, but we may have to reschedule till next week on those two. Okay. So, everyone is, we've asked them to present three to five minutes. There's a couple of things I need to do up here, but if you want to come on up and start with Cambridge.
And we do have a busy, incredible agenda today, so I'd ask people to stay within that three to five minutes, and also for board members to keep our questions brief. Thank you.
This will pick up, too.
I'd like to thank board supervisors for the opportunity to present our request for some urban renewal funds, and since we got three to five minutes, I'll just get on with it. My name is David Tom, I'm with the city of Cambridge. The first slide, basically, it just shows that we're, this is, oh, this is the actual building right here. It's the old Opera House, which was built in 1914. It's got a lot of historical record to it, and so, getting on with that. The goal of this was to rehabilitate the former Opera House and lead it to economical housing, three apartments on the upper floor with two retail suites on the bottom. The renovation of the building follows on. The new city center, which we completed in 2017, which was just a wonderful addition to the town, really helped us. And the city council's long-term goal is the preservation of existing structure as much as economically possible. We have very limited opportunities in the town, and this is one that we did not want to slip through the system, so. Currently, we are in the planning phase. We have hired FEH as a project manager, and they are an engineering firm located in Des Moines that we use for the city center, and they've done a lot of work for schools, various other city entities and governments. And they're working on the engineering documents that are needed. Looking at this, there's a lot of trades that have to come together at the proper timing, so what we're looking at is getting all the documentation together by the end of the year, and then in the February, January timeframe, release bids to see what we can get done. And FEH is working with us to make sure that we, there's numerous funding streams that we're using, so we don't want to double dip, so to speak, so we're going to use them to kind of maximize how we get through this, and hopefully that all works good. And then upon completion of this, yeah, upon completion of this, we're going to try to sell it. We want to sell it. We do not want to own the property, it is our goal to sell this and move on, so we can, other projects downtown area can be completed as well. For this grant request, we've kind of listed costs here, basically related to getting the apartments done first, so that we can generate cash flow on this, and that basically is to get the structure of the building sound, and so we can go inside and start doing remodeling. Our fundraising efforts, the total cost of this project is going to be roughly $750,000. That was a preliminary estimate from FEH. It could be a little more, it could be a little less. We're not really sure at this point, but that's a close ballpark number. We received a $100,000 urban renewal grant from the state of Iowa, and we have also received a $250,000 red leg loan through Huxley Communications. And this is kind of interesting, because this was one of the new projects, my understanding was, and we were awarded $250,000 of $7 million available nationwide, which is kind of, kind of a neat deal. The city is, like I said, we're going to continue looking for grant opportunities, facade grants, there's just numerous ones out there. It's kind of hard to keep track of them all, really, but, and we're going to use, hopefully use some Story County TIF funds and Cambridge budgeted items and some city TIF funds as well. This is the proposed apartment layout. There will be three apartments, roughly 900 square feet for the large ones, two bedrooms, and then one off towards the rear of the building, which would be about 750 feet. We're also putting in the, not the, the ability to put an apartment in there, because we've got to do some low, lower basement work, so the thought is to get that in there. If we can afford it, we can put an elevator in to service all three floors. And then this is the lower business suites downstairs in the main lobby area, and I think those would be right at about 800, 900 square feet each, with storage in the back, and then a common hallway that runs through the building with two exits. And then this little area out in here on the bottom, we're intending to make this like into a green space, like a, where, you know, like you put a grill out there or something like that, and our parking would be up to the back here, so. Some of the stuff we're putting into that, Huxley is GIG certified for telecommunications, which is kind of nice, and the standards are all to recycle as much material as we possibly can, and then utilize insulation and everything that meets or exceeds current And then these potential tenants, Cambridge is kind of in the middle of Ames, Des Moines, so we're feeling that with, with a very robust offering like this, we can get some renters in there and serve it, some lower-cost housing is what we're really going for. And then maybe have a couple businesses downstairs where we get some people, you know, four or five jobs may be made, maybe the people who rent the downstairs could want to buy the property and then live upstairs, too, so. And then, just to close out here, we reached an agreement with the American Legion Post to get that building and to work on it, and we want to create jobs, and we want to put in some new housing, and basically make our Main Street, you know, our Main Street area road as much as possible, so. And with that, I'm going to close this out, and are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Like, I think, if I heard you correctly, you were thinking about, then, when this building is done, to try to sell it. So, if I'm carrying through here, what I'm hearing is that you've collected already $350,000 in grants, state money.
No, that $250,000 is a loan through the Red Leg.
Thank you.
We had a $100,000 grant through U.S. DIA.
Okay. So, do you estimate $100,000, you're asking for $50,000 for us, you're applying for other grants. So, the grants are to fix this building up, but then you're going to take that money, you're going to sell it, and then you're going to have cash to put anywhere you want. And I don't believe we've ever had a situation before where someone's tried to convert grant money into cash. So, I'm looking to the back of the room to Leon Harder.
I could not answer that.
I'm not asking you that. I just want to make sure I understand what the proposal is here. I'm looking at Leon Harder. We have had others where we...
Ziering and Collins, though.
But the goal is to take the money and reinvest in our downtown area.
Okay. But then we don't have control over how that's reinvested, as opposed to when we're giving the grant directly. I'm not saying yea or nay.
No, I understand.
I'm just, this is, okay, and I, we can hear more later when we have the discussion, I would assume, but that's my big question on this one, is the conversion of money that we've given for a specific purpose, that purpose will be realized, but we're going to get cash back off of it, so.
But I think it would also benefit the county, because the tax base for the town will also increase as well, so.
So, like I said, I'm just, I'm just asking to clarify, and so we can get more information down there later on from Leon Harder about how that has been done in the past to convert into cash. Okay, thank you. That was my question.
I was going to have a question in that particular area, so it's answered it so far.
Got it.
The loan need out, what are the terms to be?
I think it's 20 years, and I think it's 0% for a very, very minimal amount of money, but kind of the neat thing about that is, it goes into a fund so that Huxley can reuse that money for different entities within Southern Story County, and that is my understanding. So, it kind of goes into a rotating fund.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Collins will be coming up next, while I switch this over. And to answer your question, we have had, just off the top of my head, Ziering, Collins, and Slater have all had buildings that have been city-owned that have been transitioned to different ownerships at some point.
Okay. Thank you.
Brett?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is my first chance to address this new board.
I wanted to congratulate you all for being here. It's always good to suck up when you're going to ask for money, so. My name is Brett Kellman, just on the merit Collins, and with me in the audience, I've got Dell Amson, he's on the city council, and I may pull him up to answer a few questions. I don't know, so you've had a chance to visit Collins frequently, some of you haven't had a chance to visit very much, because obviously you're new to the job, but we've done a lot over the last few years trying to make improvements in the community, both economically, adding affordable housing, infrastructure, just a ton of things we've done. And we've been to this board several times, and you guys have been very generous with us in the past. This specific time, we are really, really working hard to take our storm mitigation efforts a step further. If you look at that map on the wall, and I don't have, this is probably not the best map, but across the northern part of the city, we've put about $600,000 worth of infrastructure work mainly done in-house, do CBG grants through our own funding, and we have done a lot to try to mitigate about 70% of the water that comes through town. If you don't know where Collins is located, it's not in a great spot. About 100 years ago, they picked up the city and moved it a half a mile to its current location to be closer to the railroad, and doing so, they put it on two creek beds, and in turn, we flood a lot. And all this different effort we put into upgrading the town and bringing in new infrastructure and all these new businesses and things, we've got to get water out quickly, and there is a real loss of, well, there's some, what's the word I'm trying to say? Property loss when we have this flooding. So, we've worked hard to try to get the water through town quickly, and the improvements we've made in the northern part of town has really, really helped that, but what we're now trying to set our sights on is tackling the southern part of town, and if you look up there, there is a green outlined area, and our intent is to, and we've already started the process, I guess, in terms of conversations, is to purchase that, it's about 4.6 acres, and turn that into a retention pond, and then we can take the water, the flow off as it comes in from the fields, and try to circumvent it away from the town before it actually causes the damage it causes. We've already raised some money for this. I think what we're right now looking for, the kind of do, is help us with that last final push. And it's actually a fairly small portion of the entire project itself, but Dell, is there anything you'd add to that? I've only got three to five minutes, and I didn't want to dazzle you with too many pictures and stuff, but that's what we're looking for, just help getting this thing carved out, and we're going to do the work in-house. So, we've got a city guy who will do the work, who will, so we've got a lot of skin in the game, to be honest with you.
Oh, I just, my own question is, because I'm trying to visualize on the map here. So, is where the green is where you want to have the retention pond, is that still within the city limits, or is it?
Absolutely.
It is, it's still within the city limits?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Thanks.
And we will own the property, we will not be selling it or giving it up.
Okay.
We're going to maintain this, and...
I'm a good go.
Why would a retention pond not be considered part of the normal infrastructure of a community as opposed to an economic development?
Well, we've never had any retention ponds in town, and really, to be honest with you, the retention efforts are, they're a contributory factor to our economic development, to our residential development, to our just maintaining a relatively good way of life, and also it takes a lot of pressure off the current infrastructure we have there, because what happens is, as the water comes through town, we can't handle it. We can't handle it quick enough, and it just pools and sits there. And the idea, and we've actually established a couple retention ponds down here in the park already, just in last year, trying to catch some of that water, because we've had a lot of flooding in these houses over here. Senior housing over here caused a lot of problems with those people, but right now, where the water runs through here, it takes us right through all this residential area and puts pressure right on the edge of our Main Street, to be honest with you. In fact, it actually does flow right over our Main Street, so the idea of trying to capture this and hold this water and slow it down before it comes through and cause the damage it causes and disrupt, it disrupts commerce, is what it does, in a lot of ways, so.
I'm sorry, I just realized.
I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
Well, you gave the answer that you feel is applicable. So, my other thing is, Brett, and I don't know if you realize, but when the applications first came in, I was in favor of disqualifying your application.
Okay.
And the reason was, is that I don't feel that you meant the intent here in applying for two different projects and trying to lump everything in the town when that's never been the grant. Now, upon advice from the county attorney's office, from our civil attorney, pointing out, we should always be inclusive instead of exclusive, and therefore allow the emails after the fact to dictate what your project was, so that's why you're on. I just want you to know that.
Sure.
That, and so, you asked if your previous answer, that was your previous answer, but I hear once again about this whole-town concept. It's an argument everybody can use. We're trying to improve our whole town, and I don't know that that is what this grant was ever set up for, but that'll be a discussion the board has, I think, when we go forward. I just want to be fair.
No, I understand. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I guess my response to that would be, especially in small towns, so many things rely on other things, and they're all interconnected, and when you can fix one thing, it helps something else, it helps two, three, five, 10 things, because we're so, well, once again, I'll use the word interconnected. So, I know this is helping a lot of things, and it's going to solve a lot of problems for us.
Let me keep us going. I have one quick question.
Sure.
Your original request was 39.5 for the chief project?
Yes, and we reduced it.
Whether you're a member of the now?
23.5.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. And it's still a fairly small portion of the overall project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, may I just remind everyone in the audience that as it stands right now, we have been told by the auditor's office, this is a preliminary figure, there are only $165,500 available in our TIF fund, and we have grants of two, requests for $243,000.
Absolutely. Any other questions from Lisa?
No, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Rocky Smith, I'm with the city of Huxley, Parks Department. We have the Heart of Iowa Trail that runs through our town, and right now, we have numerous spots where people can get on and off the trail. We have one left that is all basically just gravel, and we now have sidewalks out on our First Street area that have been put in. We would like to connect the trail to those sidewalks, because we have homes now just to the north of that, and more are growing out that direction, so we would like to put in a new place to get on and off the trail, that it's not just a gravel area anymore. a gravel area anymore.
And what was your final amendment?
I believe so.
You could answer on this.
Yeah. Yes.
Questions? Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions?
No, I don't have a question on this one.
Okay. I do. All right. So there's already housing growth in this area, correct?
Yes.
And there's already a trail, and it's a pretty short trail with gravel on it?
Yes, it's a connecting from the actual Heart of Iowa Trail to our existing sidewalks.
Okay. So how would this spur economic development, given that the area is already being built up?
It'll give it more, it'll give everybody more of a chance to, there's that land that's on there that the trail runs through, that the person that owns it would like to move how it flows through there, so they could possibly sell that land. But our trail, how the agreement was when it was built, it kind of cuts through the middle of everything, and they would like to sell that as commercial property, from what I was told.
And then, so my follow-up on that, and why, since this is such a short length of trail, would you feel there'd be significant economic growth by paving it as opposed to leaving it gravel?
Most of the trail around that area has already all been paved the last couple of years. It went from a gravel trail to all paved. So we were just wanting to continue with making sure everything is paved.
Okay, thanks. That's it from you.
Hey, good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. My presentation, like my project, is going to leave no visible remnants. I don't have anything to show you. And when we're done, everything that we did will be buried in the ground. What we're trying to do is replace water main valves in town. And the reason we're doing this is over the past couple of years, we had three water main breaks where we had to shut down the water for the entire city. And essentially drain the pipes so we could fix the break because we could not valve down the system. And this is unacceptable for the businesses in town. It's unacceptable for the school. And our concern is that we have another, that this continues. And so we've engaged our engineers to do a study, $5,000 study, to help us identify which valves need to be replaced so that we can at least keep water to the business, downtown business area if we have another water main break. We anticipate having to replace probably 20% of the valves over time. And each valve replacement is about $1,500. We have about 150 valves in town. So this is a long-term project. We need to get started. And what we're requesting is about $15,000. And we have categorized this under the Main Street revitalization because I keep getting poison pen letters from the businesses every time we have to shut them down. They have to close their business, and the boil order for three days afterwards is just intolerable. So that's my entire presentation.
How many of those have total in town?
Oh, we have over 150.
So this one do ten?
It might do seven, might do 10. It all depends on how difficult they are to dig up. The ones on Main Street are going to be a little bit more difficult to dig up because it's on Highway 210. The ones on our own streets, we can dig up and fix pretty easily. And we estimate right now that about 20% of the valves are, have become inoperable over time. So this is the first step, and it'll help us get started.
Yeah, so how often have you had to close down your businesses because of this particular...
In the last two years, we've done it three times.
And how long have they been, have you been shut down?
Well, one of the water main breaks was lasting about a half a day because you have to drain the water out.
Right.
In order to get down in the hole and work on the pipe. And the others were three or four hours. But the problem is not the length of time that they are actually out of water. The problem is the next three days because you get the system filled back up again, and you have to have the boil order. And when there is no water, when there is no restrooms, you can't have a business running. So it's very difficult coming in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, you answered it with the Main Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and Doug Miller is here giving me moral support, a house person.
Did a great job.
Couldn't have done it without me.
Hi, my name is Shanna Spear. I'm the Director of the Nevada Public Library here for the City of Nevada.
Hi, Shanna.
I've had an earworm in my brain the past week because of this presentation, and I'm going to share it with you despite my croaky voice. So I apologize in advance, but I saw the sign, and it opened up my eyes. I saw the sign. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that '90s song that was in my head for the past week. But in 2018, we did a community survey, and 38% of our respondents said that they find out about our programs through our outdoor sign. Currently, it's an analog sign, and we have to go out and change it manually. We have over 100 programs scheduled this summer, and obviously, not all of them are going to make it onto the sign. We have over 500 programs annually that bring in over 10,000 people into our library. So especially during the summer, sometimes we have to change the sign every couple of days, which means that they're not up there very long. People can't see it unless they go by one to two days before the event itself. If we are able to get a new digital sign, we can have programs up there longer. They'll be able to rotate and get through faster. We won't have to reword any of our events because we have not enough letters. We only have a certain number of letters, and so sometimes we have to change some of the wording to make sure that they can fit on there appropriately. It'll take less staff time to update because it will be able to be updated on the computer. You won't have to go out and change, rearrange the letters themselves. Weather will no longer be an issue because we won't have to go out and shovel. It won't be, you know, pouring down rain or blazing heat while we're out there changing it. And it will also revitalize the outer appearance of the library and bring us up to speed with some of the other city buildings, like Gates Hall, the Fire Department, and City Hall itself. Libraries tend to be the heart of the community, and people look for good libraries when they move here, so being able to revitalize the appearance of our library would be a boon.
Thank you. Questions?
Could you just, you said there were, what, 10,000?
Over 10,000 attendees to the programs that come in.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I am.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And we have somebody here from Rowland.
Stephanie is, yes. Noel McClatchy from Rowland. I'm part of the pool fundraising committee. We requested $75,000. We, we, the total cost for our new pool is $3.6 million. We had a bond pass back in March for $3.1, and our goal for the fundraising committee is to come up with that gap, $500,000. We did get a Prairie Meadows grant for $50,000, and we've done some different fundraising events in our town that has totaled $13,000. So we still have quite a ways to go for that $500,000. City Council will have a discussion tomorrow night regarding a different layout for our pool, just because we're having some troubles bridging that gap between the fundraising and the $500,000. Our goal is to have construction begin the fall of 2020, and part of the reason for that is the projected cost will increase 5% each year. So to minimize additional costs, we're hoping to start construction in the fall of 2020.
Do you have other grant requests out or other...
I believe they are working with Dustin on that, but I don't know the actual grants that they're working on.
Any questions?
I have a question for staff, and it might be a Lisa Markley question here, but, or Leanne, but once we go ahead and award those grants, are they not supposed to be done and funded within this, a year?
So the debt that, or the, on projects that are awarded this year, that cert, that deck is certified to the auditor by December 1st of this year. So technically, they become fiscal year '21 projects. And so the funding becomes available starting in '21. And Lisa's going to come, walk me through this.
You're correct, but as we've pointed out numerous times, once you decide and approve and certify this, then those dollars go to that period end of conversation. So it's been four years on some of them that have not been dropped out.
Right. Thank you. So I think that might have been applicable with Capebridge, too. All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm good. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There are three of us here, three of us here speaking to the Story City Carousel Pavilion restoration project. That's a mouthful. Mark Jackson is administrator for City of Story City, who owns the pavilion. Jay Wilson is Executive Director of the Story City Greater Chamber Connection Main Street, which owns the carousel. And I'm a GCC Board Member, Carousel Rep. In your application were many color photos. Please refer. Karen Hermanson. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Karen Hermanson, GCC Board Rep. In the application were many colorful photos. I did not duplicate them today. We did pass out the latest architect's rendition. I can email that to Leanne and give it to you electronically if you would prefer. Tourism plays an important role in the economy of Story City. Dollars flow into our community, which support our 13 restaurants, three motels, three convenience stores, and our retail of all sizes. The Story City Antique Carousel is not only an important part of our community's history, it is also the centerpiece of this tourism program. We give 20,000 rides, approximately 20,000 rides a season, and our visitor logs document we annually have visitors from all 50 states and about a dozen foreign countries, in addition to people from every city in Story County. Facebook is marvelous. We take no prisoners on our Facebook page. It's robust, it's active, it's colorful, and it's engaging. And we get to track the users, their geographic locations, their gender. So we document all of those numbers. People who live in Johnston, traveling to Clear Lake on a regular basis, designate Story City as their stopping point. We hear that story over and over again. The restored carousel's been housed in its current pavilion, specially designed for that specific use since 1982, when the building was built. It's part of one of the prettiest dry entrance, community entrances, and it's a focal point. It overlooks our park and the Main Thoroughfare. It was built 37 years ago, and it now needs updating and repair. I have learned from the Main Street program that good design is timeless and never goes out of style. The overall look of this building will be historical, yet classic. We will, the details are in the application, we'll be opening up the south wall, installing a new set, an additional set of massive sliding doors to show, better showcase this, the, what's the treasure inside, better showcase it to the outside, to all traveling along Story City's Main Thoroughfare. New full-view doors with tempered glass up to code will provide 24/7 visibility. We're hitting visibility, increase ventilation, increased natural light, a lot of different areas. Maintenance-free hardy board siding, soffit with a new ventilation system in it to increase the building's environmentally comfortableness. The exterior wiring will all be brought up to code. These are long-term improvements, expected to last for the life of the building. All of the contractors working on the project will be, are from Story County. The project as a whole has been a goal for many years because the City of Story City completed its North Park improvements, including the nice concrete landing surrounding. We now have more capacity for mobility, from people, from all kinds of mobility issues. Can park in an accessible spot, a parking spot, come down, access events, watch movies, watch concerts, ride the carousel, enjoy it with their families. Because this is all done, now is the time to go forward with this final, final improvement. We started working on this in July of 2018, have gotten a very positive response from the community, including the city, Economic Development Foundations. We've had donations from 25 businesses and 65 individuals. But we're here today kind of on the tail end of, hopefully, the tail end of the project. We're asking for your support through the Urban Renewal Area Grant to help us get past the finish line. As our application said, our numbers are still about that $77,000 to $79,000 budget, and we've raised about $58,000. Any questions? Thank you for this opportunity.
Any questions?
No, I just had a comment that the URA funds here from the county have been used several times related to North Park. Yeah, so I guess we do have some skin in the game already, don't we? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, we did receive notice from the city clerk that there was a tractor accident in Ziering, and the mayor is responding to that, so they do some repairs and will try to get them on next week. Unfortunately, they, that took probably over a...
Next, we're going to go to item 14-2, which is the new contract agreement for the Square County and the Marshall Service. We have the sheriff here, and the county attorney, and other staff in the sheriff's office, I see. This is on the agenda by Supervisor Olson. What I would like to do is ask the sheriff to try to give this...
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
I had something I wanted to introduce why I asked for this, but, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
You may have people like to excuse me, I just thought we have people we represent and that's what you're doing.
I understand, well, I wanted to thank them, first of all, for being here, because this is a request of mine, not a request of the boards. And I just wanted to explain what, how it came about and what actually, as far as I'm concerned, expectations are from this. And on July 12th, there was a vigil held at the Justice Center, and I answered some questions, Supervisor Merkin and I spoke. It was in reaction to what's happening down at the border in, at the Texas and Arizona, New Mexico and Mexico border. And it became clear to me then, with getting some follow-up questions, that there was a lot of interest about exactly what our contract was, about how things were carried out here. And as a result, I, I, I'm hoping that everyone will hear the same information at the same time. That's my goal today. I've heard comments made to me that were, I believe were incorrect, but from members of the public, et cetera. So that's my goal today, is to ascertain that and also just ask the questions that the public's been asking. So once again, I'd like to thank you both for taking the time, like to thank the staff for taking their time, so we can get the same information out. Thank you. Okay, now.
Okay. This contract, Contract Department of Justice, US Marshals, was originally signed on November 4th of 2003. This is about a year after we moved to the Justice Center. And this board probably isn't familiar with the capacity we had when we were here in this building, and we were about 40 inmates over, over our capacity. So, we weren't able to enter into any kind of agreement at that time. But when we moved to the new Justice Center, we were contacted by the Marshal Service, and through those negotiations, we ended up creating a contract. And as we create this or any other contract that we do in the sheriff's office, we include the county attorneys, our partner, to help us draft that contract. When that was prepared, we presented at the Board of Supervisors then as well, and informed the board, had a discussion with the board and what this contract would do. This contract is not only with US Marshal Service, it's also identified as Federal Bureau of Prisons and Immigration and Naturalization. Now, Code of Iowa, Chapter 825, regarding enforcement of immigration law by all employees of any agency that holds immigration folks. It states that compliance with federal immigration detainer requests. It states that there are two requirements. The first requirement is that the request must be in writing, and number two, that the I-247 detainer request must be accompanied by plus at least one of the following. One is either a DHS, Department of Homeland Security, I-200 warrant for arrest of alien, or B, which is DHS I-205, a warrant for removal or deportation. We started holding ICE prisoners through this contract in August of 2017, and then again, that's when we came another time and visited with the board about this. Our holding of these inmates is nothing different than we hold for other jurisdictions, such as Pope County, Dallas County, Boone County, or any other county that we hold. These people either have a warrant or some type of signed affidavit by the federal government that allows us to legally hold the people in custody. Also, what we're doing here is, has absolutely nothing whatsoever to do with, to go along what's happening on the southern border. In Story County, we are not a ICE detention facility. We do not hold families, we do not hold children, we don't even have the capability of holding juveniles that are arrested in Story County. Story County has a contract with the Eldora State Training Facility there to hold, has a number of beds for housing juveniles arrested in Story County. So with that, I guess I would leave any other comments to respond to questions the board may have.
County Attorney Reynolds.
Thank you. Well, good morning to the Board of Supervisors, Jessica Reynolds, Story County Attorney. I agree completely with the sheriff's presentation regarding the federal marshal's contract in his entirety. I, I do feel compelled, in the spirit of transparency, to comment today on the events of last Tuesday related to this agenda item. Last Tuesday, the sheriff and I met with Supervisor Olson and staff from the sheriff's office. Supervisor Olson had various questions about the federal marshal's contract. Among her questions included her concern that the contract is expired. We advised her the contract is not expired. She indicated that she was getting political pressure after the rally that was held at the Justice Center. She asked us to attend this Board of Supervisors meeting. When the sheriff and I pushed back on this, because the sheriff's already been here in 2017 about this exact contract, there's nothing that's before the board for an action item on this contract. And in our minds, political pressure of one supervisor isn't the reason to take us away from our job duties to come before the board. After we expressed those concerns, Supervisor Olson then indicated that Supervisor Heddins and Merkins were new, young to the Board of Supervisors, and wanted us to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting today. We agreed. After Supervisor Olson left our meeting, the sheriff and I discussed her comments about the other two supervisors, and their need to be informed about this contract. The sheriff reached out to Supervisor Heddins. She happened to be in her office and available to meet with us immediately. We headed over to the administration building. Once there, Supervisor Merkin was also in the office and available to meet with us. The sheriff, myself, Sergeant Lenny, all met with Supervisor Heddins and Merkins. It was an informational-only meeting, no discussion, deliberation, or action happened, so no open meeting requirements were triggered. Afterwards, we asked each supervisor separately if they desired our presence here today at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Each of them indicated that our presence was not needed. I walked to Supervisor Olson's office after this to update her about our informational-only meeting, and to advise her that neither of the other supervisors desired us to attend the meeting here today. Supervisor Olson lost her temper. She started yelling at me that the sheriff and I had quote, stabbed her in the back by talking to the other supervisors. I challenged her on this assertion. I let her know the sheriff and I could talk to anyone we want, about anything we want, and that she was being inappropriate and unprofessional. Supervisor Olson continued to raise her voice at me. Supervisor Heddins and Merkin witnessed this behavior and came into the office area. This all happened in the office area of the Board of Supervisors space. As county attorney, I want to make it clear, the sheriff and I are independent elected officials, we're also citizens. We may speak to anyone that we want to. Our speech cannot be restricted. That includes us speaking to each other, other supervisors, department heads, elected officials, and all citizens. Much to my surprise, there seems to be some confusion on this issue by Supervisor Olson. Further, the way concerns are conveyed in the office environment may affect county staff, Supervisor Olson. Please govern yourself accordingly. I'm requesting an apology for the behavior. I think you owe your counterparts an apology, as well as the sheriff and I, and any county staff that was affected by your behavior. Thank you.
County Attorney Reynolds. Are there any questions or comments from other of the Board of Supervisors?
I'm going to go ahead and refocus this meeting upon actually what we're here to do today, which is to get information out to the public about this contract, and I do have some questions. So, one of the questions that was asked at the vigil was how our, the inmates, I believe was the term that the sheriff used, are treated while they are in the custody of the Story County Sheriff's Office. And I don't know if custody's the right word, while we're, we're housing them. So, Sheriff, can you address as far as the conditions and the environment?
They are called inmates in our custody, and they are treated as all inmates in our custody are. We treat all inmates professionally, respectfully, and we see to their needs. From lodging, food, medical needs, mental health needs, whatever is necessary, we go above and beyond in the care of those that were responsible for treating.
Okay, thank you. I was asked, I've been asked about how long normally that these people stay, when they come in.
By Iowa Code, anyone gonna be incarcerated under one year is confined to the county jail. If it's over a year, it's called a felony and they go to the state penitentiary or federal penitentiary. We may hold somebody longer than that in example, if they have a trial that they're awaiting, and keeps getting pushed back, but once they're convicted, they can't be convicted for under a year, or over a year, and stay in the county jail. If you're referring specifically to the ICE holes that we're holding?
Yes, please.
We averaging right now about eight a month, and that, they'll usually come on a Monday or Tuesday, and then Wednesday morning, they'll be picked up, early Wednesday morning. So, we'll get like, each week we get about two inmates, basically is what it averages to, and then we will hold them for a couple of days and they'll be picked up. There are some days we've had as high as six, maybe eight, but then there's also some weeks we've had none.
Okay, okay. So then, what are we talking about is, say, total number of ICE-related inmates that might pass through in a year?
Well, it'd take the average of eight times 12, and that would probably be the...
Okay, so, so we're looking 100 roughly, doing, okay? Or at max for most of them, okay? I was, I've also been asked about the monetary or financial impact about this particular contract. I wondered if you had any numbers that you could provide about this, and especially in relationship to your entire department budget and your entire, from what you consider revenue.
Well, in fiscal year 1718, we received $44,454.63 for holding inmates. In fiscal year 1819, which just closed, we billed $55,017.62, of which we've received And that is because we've just billed for the, in the fiscal year, and we're waiting for those payments to, for us to receive those payments.
Is that for all the federal inmates you hold, or just the ones you hold for...
These are the ones just holding for ICE.
Okay.
And so for the two years, what we've received as of today is $99,472.25.
And that would be in compared to, you normally get 1.2 to 1.3 actual revenue from outside sources, correct? And your entire budget's over 6 million, correct?
My entire budget for the sheriff's office, about 9 million.
9 million, are we?
Just over 9 million. And I would have to look further into the records to see what the amount is. If it's 1.3, I couldn't argue with that, but I'd have to verify before I could give you more specifics.
And where I'm headed is for the misconception out in the public, among some people, that this is a, if you will, very substantial contract, that it's a lucrative source of funds.
But I would like to add to that, as sheriff in Story County, my administration, we do not look at the jail as a way to make money. We're there, if there's space available, and our partners, whether local or federal partners, request us to help them with the space needs that they have, we do so, and that generates a revenue. However, we're, I and my administration is not in the business of making money on the county jail.
Thank you. Thank you for that one. So, okay, so another question that was raised at the vigil, vigil was about access to inmates, ICE inmates. Could you please describe for us how access to inmates work for, at the Justice Center?
Well, when someone is arrested, it, I guess for lack of better terms, it's not like these people are confined in a zoo, where anyone can come and look at them or talk to them at any time. So when someone is booked into the jail, they're given a visitor request form, and they can write down who they want to have come in and visit them. And then they're put on their visitation list. We check them, of course, run warrant checks and things like this for the people on the visitation list. But then when those people come in, they, during normal visiting times, they have the opportunity to visit that inmate. Now, if someone comes up, say from an activist group, and they want to meet with the person, well, they can send that person a letter in the jail, and then when he gets the letter, he can ask to have the, a representative from that entity put on his visitation list, and he can do that, and then they can come in and see him. But we first have to know who's coming into the jail, so we can do appropriate background checks and warrant checks on that person, and then they're allowed to see them like anyone else.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, in the past, there've been comments made about, and you described too, about anyone who's coming to us has already been adjudicated. And the adjudication among some people, including even myself at one point, is I thought that they had been fully through the system, and that what was happening is that these were people who had already been ordered deported, had overstayed the deportation or leaving date, and then therefore they were being taken to Omaha or somewhere else to be deported. But, so, is that the vast majority of the people who would pass through?
For ICE, that, my understanding, that's really all we're holding for ICE right now. We're one of the collection points that ICE uses, and then Wednesday morning, the bus goes throughout the different collection points, picks up people at the different areas, and then they are taken to the Omaha area, to one of the federal air bases there, and then they're flown back to their home country.
Could I, could I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just trying to see where this is going, how long we might be looking at this, because you've asked five questions so far. Two of those, you and I, you or I, talked about at the vigil. You clarified at the vigil that the inmates are treated just like other inmates, in fact that they get good food, they get good medical attention. That was said at the vigil when there were about 100 people or more there who were interested in this topic. We also talked about the fact that we were only holding people who are being deported. So what I'm saying is some of this information has already been given to the public. And I'm just trying to see, are we doing a repeat of a lot of information we've already given out and utilizing the sheriff's and the county attorney's time for that? Because that was over, those two points were already dealt with. I just want to make that point.
Sure.
We are covering ground, some ground here that has already been dealt with to an audience of over 100 people who came to hear about it.
So, there's 100,000 people in Story County. I've received contact from people who were not at the vigil and had questions asked, and that probably because of my name in the paper, and that I did answer questions in the paper, et cetera. So I'm repeating these, so that all citizens have access to the same information.
I've also received comments from people, questions from people, and because the sheriff and the county attorney came over here to the administration building and spoke with myself and spoke with Supervisor Heddins as well, I've been able to answer those questions. So I'm, I'm, I understand what you're saying, that anybody can watch the videotape, but it seems like we're going, we spent a whole lot of time here with the sheriff's, the sheriff's time and the county attorney's time, and I just wonder how many times we need to do that?
Well, we clearly differ a little bit about, you know, getting information out, but I can move on to questions that I don't think were addressed. but I can move on to questions that I don't think were addressed at the vigil.
I appreciate that.
Sure, okay. So the contract itself, while I asked you about who we are, seem to be moving through, the contract itself would in fact allow us at, in the future, to go ahead and hold people who had not been all through the adjudication process, correct?
Well, I'd say yes and no to that, because, first of all, there's two ways that somebody can be held in the jail. If you remember years ago, there was, jails were honoring ICE detainer requests, and that was challenged in the federal court, and the federal court struck that down. When that happened, we immediately quit honoring ICE detainers alone. Now, when they come, they will come either with a warrant of arrest or a warrant for deportation, and the other way that a person can come in and be held without a warrant is that, such as, say, one of my deputies arrests somebody in the middle of the night for drunk driving. They bring him into the jail, they book him in, and they write out a, an affidavit which delivers probable cause, and then we hold that person under that signed statement of probable cause until they go in front of the judge the next morning. So if ICE would have something in the middle of the night, and they would come up, they may not have a warrant, but the federal officer would write out the affidavit and sign it, and then they'd go in front of the court the next morning.
Okay. I've been asked about what it would take for the county to get out of the contract, the part of the contract that deals with holding ICE inmates.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
So, it is the entire United States Marshall agreement that we've been canceling, and there is Article 5 on page 3 of that agreement that provides 30 days' notice to the US Marshals for cancellation contracts.
Okay, thank you, okay. And then, also, Article 6, it talks about government furnished property, that in the event, and I say in the event, it's not on the table here, it's not a motion, anything like that, we're just seeking information, is that, that government furnished property may come along with this contract. Do we have any government furnished property that would have to be returned should the county ever decide to get out of the contract?
Is this a question you've heard from the public?
No, this is mine, yeah.
I'll refer to my jail administrator on that. None that I, that I'm aware of.
Where are we at?
No, we have no property from, from this.
Okay, all right. So, so my last question is a housekeeping question, and it has to do with the yearly updates on the contract itself. So, we just get an ICE, is that a, kind of an ICE amendment? We got one, I saw in 57, in 2017, and that was pulled, and we discussed that at the time. 2018, it was on the consent agenda, and then when, the 2019 one, has that already been received? The 20, so our 2019 to 2021?
So to clarify for the record, we're just talking about the addendum that sets the rates, or the daily rates by ICE.
Yeah.
How much ICE will pay us anticipated that year for holding their inmates.
And so have we, since we get that yearly, so around this time, have we received that already?
We do have a copy.
What's that?
We do have a copy of it.
We have a copy of it, yes.
But we haven't, it hasn't come before the board yet, and does it, or does it not need to?
So we had this conversation.
Yeah, I know that, but I think that that's important for the public to know, too.
So, the addendum that just sets the rates, it's a one-sided addendum that says, this is what we're going to pay over the federal marshals contract, and that doesn't have to go through the board, but the sheriff has been putting it through the board, just has been acquired.
Okay, all right, thank you. That takes care of my questions also. Thank you very much for your time, so that everyone hears the same thing.
Oh, yeah, I do have one question. Since it was brought up, the question in regards to if we were to cancel that portion of the ICE contract, it would impact, you'd end up canceling the entire...
Correct, you can't just cancel a part of it. This is the US Marshal's contract, and this is all the federal agencies that we hold for. So we'd be canceling the entirety.
So can you just give me an example of what are some of those other individuals or cases that you hold someone for besides just the ICE? Because that's the area that we're just concentrated on, but I'm just wanting to just, I just want to understand the whole, what's the impact of the whole contract is?
We hold federal marshal prisoners, and at the Southern Marshal Service for Iowa is in Des Moines, and we're part of the Southern District for the US Marshal Service.
So for example, sorry, John.
No, go ahead.
So for example, if you'd have an overflow of federal inmates from their criminal system, so someone that's charged federally, and there's not space in federal prison for holding them, and we would provide them for that, so we've done that in the past.
And you just hold them up for that, potentially up to that year's timeframe?
Yes.
Is that it? Or just that interim, where you're, they're looking for new housing location?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, okay.
Today, we are holding out-of-county prisoners, meaning from other jurisdictions. We have 10 Polk County inmates we're holding, two other county, other counties, people that we're holding. We have one United States Marshall hold, and two Department of Corrections in the state of Iowa holds. And then we have one female Department of Correction hold as well.
And then, just two other quick questions. So you have other contracts or kind of reciprocity, I guess you'd say, did you say with Polk County, Dallas County, is that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And then my last question is, I don't think, I'm kind of under the immigration portion, that Story County is the only one that, that has this particular contract, or a US Marshal contract, is that correct? Are there other counties in the state?
My understanding is other counties in the state. John, you know?
Yeah, Polk County, Marshall County, Hard County will hold for ICE.
Johnson County.
Johnson County.
And Johnson County, so there's about five or, five or six.
Many places have a federal marshals contract.
Yes.
And, just from my constant job experience, I know that there are numerous, I don't know if they are correct now, but it used to be that any county that had space that they were able to offer to the federal marshals did offer. And since the federal marshals don't really have any lockups other than in the state of Iowa that I'm aware of, where would, where would they be held, and going to trial or whatever, if you didn't have contracts with the federal marshals? It's actually, overall, if they use the tax, there's many of the sheriff's services.
I would like to point out, it's kind of ironic, that a few years ago, I was working with the supervisors, because we were being criticized, and we were on a list of being a sanctuary county.
Because we weren't honoring the detainers?
Because, well...
Because of the...
Because we wouldn't honor the detainers alone, so they put us on a list that we're a sanctuary county. And everyone knows, the only one who can declare Story County a sanctuary county is the Board of Supervisors, and that was not done. And then, when the time of the vigil was pointed out to me, that now we're on the list for being an ICE detention facility. I don't know how we can do both. But anyway, we are not a sanctuary county, and we are not an ICE detention facility.
I want to thank both of you for your time, both today, last Tuesday, and, and for the time that the sheriff's office granted me to talk about this issue before the vigil a week ago Friday. I know this has taken a lot of your time. I do really appreciate your patience with it, Mike. I'm sorry the process wasn't always the way that it should have been, but I appreciate the job that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Now, we'll return to our agenda, and we are at item 7, consideration of minutes, and the minutes of July 19, meeting with a change.
July 16th meeting?
16th.
The end meeting date?
16th, 19 minutes, it says with change.
Because the first item on your agenda is to acknowledge the change of the compensation for, for term ending 2/6/30 of 23, not 22.
Okay, thank you. With that change, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes with the change as stated.
I second.
Okay. Evans?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minister, thank you. Consideration of personnel actions, would entertain a motion for adoption of personnel actions as listed?
I would so move.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Consideration of claims, again, I would entertain a motion to approve claims as listed.
I make the motion to approve the claims as listed.
I second.
Evans?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay. Enter approved. Next, consent agenda. Several items listed on the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I so move, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda. Okay. Public hearing items, there are no public hearings listed today, so then we'll go to additional items, and additional item 12-1 is consideration of easement agreement and driveway maintenance agreement. Jovi? And Meredith and Anderson listed, but...
I don't see them.
Don't see them, so you're on your own.
I think I can handle it. Good morning.
Okay.
This one's pretty straightforward. There was an easement agreement in the original sale agreement when we purchased this property, that if we ever put up a fence, that we'd need to have it, give the owner of the adjacent property access to his property, basically the lake area at the animal shelter. So, this is, Ethan worked with Al Micos's attorney, come up with an agreement, we'd install a gate, and we would maintain the gate, and they would maintain the roadway if they ever chose to put one in. So, any questions?
I don't have any.
No, no.
I'd entertain a motion to approve this easement agreement.
I make the motion to approve the easement agreement.
I second.
Evans?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved.
Thank you.
Then we have Todd Lonell to talk about hazard recognition program.
Good morning. I'm happy to present our first safety program for Story County. That's exciting, we're there. So, that program I sent to you folks, did you guys have any questions about that? It's pretty laid out. It's got, this is the general format we're getting, I'm looking forward to use for our safety programs. I've worked with the Safety Committee on this, I've spoken to some department heads and elected officials, just kind of reviewing it, and some of their feedback. I've had it posted out on our Intranet site for employees to look at, I've gotten some of their feedback, and with all that information, what you have in front of you is, is a result of that, so...
Are there any questions for Tom?
No, no questions. I'll just say that I recognize all the terms from the online training that I did in regards to this.
Is there a timeframe in your mind where you'd like to have all the departments and offices actually have done the steps that are identified here?
Yeah, I'm gonna work with that, because of the departments and offices of their annual schedules and how different they are, say, conservation's really busy during the spring and summertime, I'm probably able to do a little more work within the winter, whereas secondary roads is kind of the opposite of that, you know, during the winter, they're busy pushing snow and all of that. So, I'd look for when these programs roll out. Within the, within about six months, I expect them to have, moving forward and getting the sections filled out that they need to, that apply to them, and at the very least, having me involved in helping them make those decisions and getting those answers that they need.
Thanks.
Any other questions? And if not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the hazard recognition programs presented.
I would so move that we approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have my co-director of conservation with amendment agreement for design for the sustainable energy at Dakens.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, thank you. What you have in front of you is a request from the Conservation Board to move forward with an addendum to a contract that we have for design services with the cabin that we're designing at, at Dakens Lake. This cabin, as you know, has been, is being designed with emphasis on demonstrating sustainable energy techniques, procedures that can be used in, in other buildings as well, in addition to, of course, the added benefit of, this be the first cabin that, that we have in the county conservation system that's available for, for camping. So, large, a large demand on cabins statewide, and we expect that this cabin will be very well-received, and, and we look forward to that. So we originally entered into a contract for $25,600 with a design firm, and as we start sharpening pencils with design and looking at what we want to demonstrate, etc., in more detail, then we are, are, I guess, broached with this request from our design firm and endorsement from the Conservation Board to move forward with this addendum, which would bring their overall contract to $33,100. That is, I don't have that figure in front of me, so forgive me the exact amount here, but that is less than 10% of the overall project cost, more, a little more than 10% of the cap, direct construction cost, if you will. So with that, I guess I'll, I'll say that if the board this morning approves this contract amendment, we'll, we'll be ready to, non-scheduled and to release design documents for a bid probably the middle of September. So with that, unless you have any other questions?
No, thank you for the time, yeah, that you took to meet with each one of us individually to explain what was going on first.
Very good.
Yeah. I would make a motion.
I'm second. Oh, sorry. Finish your motion.
As presented.
How's that? Okay.
It moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the agreement of design. Olson?
Aye.
Evans? Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you, Mike. And you have the next item as well, which is the question engaged with Trust for Public Lands with technical assistance. Can you explain that to us?
You bet.
We talked about it before, but for the record, let's have another explanation.
Yeah, and, and thank you again. So, yeah, and I don't have the exact date when I brought this forward the first time, and we had a good discussion about what we were asking for here, and, and have had an opportunity to go back and answer, believe those questions, and have some individual meetings with all of you as well in this regard. To, to be short, the Conservation Board is always interested in looking for, looking for additional funding, and looking for sustainable funding. Sustainable funding for conservation is, has been an issue statewide for decades, and has been an issue that, that still hasn't been answered. We hope that we can get an answer to that on, on some level. This represents the desire for, from the Conservation Board, and we hope from the supervisors, to begin to look at what are some options, what are some options for local sustainable funding? And so by sending this letter that we hope you will endorse, we would be requesting the Trust for Public Lands to give us some technical advice and some assistance in that. But first off, they would give us a proposal, so we're asking for this letter, we modified the wording a little bit with Supervisor Olson, and they, they will be, which was, which was always the intent, we've spelled that out a little more in the letter, but they will give us a proposal to give us these services, at which time, then we will have another decision-making opportunity to either move forward with their proposal, or to not move forward with their proposal. If their proposal comes in, the... proposal, or to not move forward with their proposal. If their proposal comes in, comes in in an amount that would trigger any kind of competitive process that we have at the county, then we would move forward with our, through our procurement policy. So, I think those were your primary questions, Loris, and I think that, I hope that those have been answered. I will say that this, that if we, when we get to that process of making the next decision point, it would not be, if it has a financial requirement, that would not be with taxpayer funding. That would be through private donations. And so, at this stage of the game, this is the very first step in getting, in requesting some assistance or some review, and that is, that is purely all we're doing here, is requesting, requesting a proposal from an organization called the Trust for Public Land, who does this on a state to national level, and very well situated in order to help us best answer the questions that we have in front of us. So, with that, I would urge you to support this letter.
I'd just like to make note that in the discussions that Mike and I have had, pointing out that even though it's private money, who might be a donor coming forward to pay for this, that the money would be flowing through Story County accounts. So, at some point, then it became our money with an earmark.
It would be donations to the county.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so, thank you. I would make a motion that we approve this, as presented today.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I do have one point, and I just want to kind of reiterate something I said the other time, that we talked about this, is that I hope the study is not, it's not the kind of thing where there's a foregone conclusion as to what's best for Story County. It's not a cookie cutter from some other, you know, something this group does, and they just apply it to the county. I really want to see that it talks about goals specifically for Story County projects, specifically for Story County, doesn't analysis, but truly local and federal.
Correct.
I just wanted to repeat that because I, what I, because the document I read, I felt a little unsure about that issue. So, you'll hear that.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have Carla Webb for discussion and consideration of FY 2021 funding priorities for the asset process. Morning, Carla.
Good morning.
I'm here today for kind of filling in, I guess I would say, as far as some of the county functions for asset right now, while the Director of External Operations position is open, and being filled. And so...
We appreciate you joining us.
You bet. You're welcome. So, we're in the process right now of preparing asset is for the FY 2021 asset funding allocation process. That'll start next month. So, in preparation for that is each funder needs to identify their funder priorities. So, during, as this process gears up, volunteers then will start conducting their agency visits. Providers will submit their 2021 budgets. We'll do then the agency hearings and work sessions. Those occur in January. So, I brought before you today the Story County priorities that had been approved by the Board last year. So, I have not made any changes to them. As I understand it, the Board of Supervisors last year reworked the priorities as you see them here today. My understanding is they had worked to categorize the service areas, and then the bullet points under each service area are not categorized or prioritized, is my understanding. The Board of Supervisors had been involved back in May with a comprehensive review meeting of the asset process that happened with all of the joint funders, and at that time, the joint funders provided input to the asset administrative team in regards to establishing funding priorities, measuring outcomes, and allocating funds. A theme that came from that initial meeting was to look at establishing joint funder priorities. The asset administrative team has a rough draft of that, but it's not to the point yet to be brought before all of the funders for consideration for the FY 20 funding allocation process. So, that's why I've brought the existing priorities to you for consideration. So, as you'll see there, they are categorized. The first priority there is services addressing basic needs, and then there's those subbullets there for those in that area. The second service area is services addressing safety and well-being needs, and then the third service area is services promoting self-sufficiency. So, I guess what I'm looking for direction from the Board today is if you want to continue with the existing priorities as they are, if you'd like to make changes to those priorities, reorganize the service categories, prioritize subbullets, how you would like to proceed.
We did, we spent some change in that a year ago.
Pardon me?
You said we did some changes.
Correct. Yeah.
I'm glad you brought up, I'm just gonna look at, I had some thoughts on this. I'm glad you brought up the joint funders, you know, priorities being, you know, made joint, because I think that's what I forgot of that May meeting, is what we were saying. They were so similar that wouldn't it be easier, you know, for the whole asset process if we were able to combine our priorities into joint funder priorities? If that's the direction the team's looking at going, I don't know that I see we should make major changes right now, because something's gonna be brought back to us pretty soon, is what I'm hearing. Unless, unless either of you see anything that you think really needs to be worked on or changed, I would say, let's, I would entertain a motion to adopt these priorities for funding.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to adopt these priorities for 2021.
I second that.
Any further discussion or questions, Carla?
No, I agree with your rationale, your thought process. Sounds good.
Yep, I agree as well.
Evans?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Anything else about assets you'd want us to forget right now?
Nope, I think that was all. So, thank you.
Again, I appreciate you helping out and stepping in a bit more, more work with asset in this area.
You bet. Thank you.
We have no department reports listed, so we're down to other reports. And we have Jovi again, Melissa Spencer, talked about possibility of funding to upgrade our generator.
Morning again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First time, Melissa.
Yeah, I was approached by Melissa about a week and a half ago, that we, there may be some hazard mitigation funds that we could utilize to upgrade the generator at this facility. And I think it's, I think it's worth looking into, because I think at this point, we're not committing to anything other than submitting a notice of intent of, that we're looking to potentially upgrade this generator, because, Loris and Lynda, you know that this generator at this facility only powers certain areas, primarily emergency management, the EOC, and then the information technology server room. The rest of the building is primarily just egress lighting and a power outage situation, so. And years past, we've pursued upgrading this generator, and it has a pretty large cost associated with it due to the installation of the original one, and we did the remodel. To save costs, they split it up, so to, it's more to it than just upgrading the size of the generator. We'd have to do a little bit of interior rewiring in that. So, there's a potential of the, it being about a $450,000 project, so. From my discussions with Melissa, there's potential that we could upgrade the generator with the cost to the county of about 25% of the project, which, based off my rough figures, about $115,000 it would cost the county to upgrade that.
Did you say 150?
Yeah, rough, 115,000.
One one five. Thank you.
And then I think Melissa can speak a little bit more on the hazard, go ahead.
The grant programs that we are looking at are the hazard mitigation grant dollars, and we are allowed access to those because we have a FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan for the county, and the county did identify one of its priorities is backup power generation on county-owned buildings. There are two pots of money, so to say, within the hazard mitigation program. One is the pre-disaster mitigation, which is where we traditionally get our planning dollars from to complete the updates to the hazard mitigation plan. They also do funding of projects prior to a disaster. So, this is something that may qualify under that grant program. With the Presidential Disaster Declaration that the State of Iowa has received this year, there also is additional disaster funding that comes with that program as well. I'm unsure of the dollar amount, but backup power generation is one of the priorities for the hazard mitigation grant program that comes with the disaster declaration. The starting process, it would be for the county to submit a notice of intent. This does not require the county to say they will commit to any funding. It's simply saying, this is our project we would like to do, this is what we, why we would like to do it, and this is our estimate of the cost. Once the programs are reviewed by the state, then there's an invitation to apply. Once that invitation to apply is extended, that's where, I believe, it's my understanding, that the county would then make some commitment to meeting whatever the match is going to be. As Jovi mentioned, the maximum match that the county would be responsible for is 25% of the project. It may be less, depending on which grant program that it does come out of, but the most of the county would be accountable for is 25%.
What does the notice of intent do?
It can be submitted anytime. Now, the grant program is open. As soon as I can assist Jovi in getting into the grant system, he can make application of that notice. He could put in that notice of intent whenever.
And my understanding from some brief discussions I've had about this, is the current generator would be relocated to another county location, doesn't tackle on the engineers?
It's a possibility. There's a, there's a couple of things that would have to be accounted for, one of which is probably the major one, is the voltage that the generator for this facility is, is a larger voltage than what the engineering complex is. So, there, we'd have to do more, whether or not the utility would allow to put a transformer with that generator to bring it to the correct voltage to run that complex. As far as the generator's concerned, it is large enough, but as I dug more into it, there's some other issues with relocating it, and we've run into that at most all of our other county facilities, because most of them run at a, an older traditional voltage, which is 120, 208, similar to what you have in your home. And then, the modern way of commercial buildings is you run it at a higher voltage for lighting in your equipment, because it's more energy efficient. So, this generator is of that voltage, so. But there is also the potential that the, either the installing contractor or the manufacturer, there is a market for them to purchase our existing generator.
Any other questions?
Yeah, follow-up with the transformer. So, does your $450,000 quote include the transformer, or...
That would just be, this dollar amount does not include any cost associated with installing the current generator in another facility.
Okay. And then, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Also, if we moved it to another facility, you had to move it around. I seem to remember a previous generator, and I'm, that we had to actually build a pad to support it, right? So, that might be a cost also.
Yeah, so you, roughly off the top of my head, if we were, if we were allowed to install this generator at, let's just use the engineering buildings complex, it would probably be an additional $70,000 to install this generator at that complex, above the $450,000 for this facility.
And that's to make it compatible, voltage compatible.
Make it compatible and work. Yeah, you'd have to, you know, there's a large concrete pad with a footing that it would have to sit on and some...
You'd be looking at approximately another $70,000.
Yes.
Okay. That was then my question, Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions? So, I would entertain a motion, if anybody wants to make one, that Jovi said that must...
Yeah, just a consent that you go ahead and do it. I have no objection to Jovi and Melissa pursuing funds to moving forward on this.
That's a great question. Thank you.
I think that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any upcoming agenda items that we can get on to at the future meetings?